Welcome to the regular meetings, National Department of Commissioners, please stand for the education and place.
Let us pray. Lord, we once again come to this new meeting thanking you for another day in Ashland, Kentucky. We once again ask you for your wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its people. We thank you for our recent successful endeavors and pray for guidance as we face our challenges. Bless our staff, our citizens, and those in attendance today. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will have a most received filed agenda. On paper. Most received filed minutes from our regular meeting of May 10th, 2018, May 21st, recess meeting, 2018. Any discussion? On paper. 聽到 Hearings reports. Commissioners, anything new?
I just have a couple of comments. One, I just want to commend Ashland in Motion, City of Ashland, for the fantastic first Friday that was put on. I don't think we've done anything as big for First Friday ever. And, you know, there were a lot of hands in that process. I was a part of the team to help plan the groundbreaking and the celebration downtown. And I know that it was a feat to get it done. So again, I just want to say, job well done to everybody who was involved in that. The other thing, and we may talk about this, but the Fourth Annual Reconfests is on Saturday. VIP check-in starts at 11:30 at the new air-conditioned VIP tent. And regular check-ins start at 1:00. Come out if you choose.
Also, I just want to welcome everybody today. I just have a few announcements. We have two projects going on at the river right now. The first one is the River Trail. I'm really excited about that. Our crews are carving the trail right now. Hopefully, we'll have a community field coming up. I don't see the manager will say more about this. And also, our recycling center is about to be finished down there. It really is, looks nice. As we complete this, we're also taking the questionnaires for the curbside recycling. We hope we can accommodate all parties. And so, I'm really excited about this. Want to make mention that the Elk Sports Day is also Saturday, that we're honoring our own Mark Mayer. And just one little note, Mayor, I got a request from Paul Castle about amending the residential parking pass ordinance. And I'd like to give that to Chris Pullum and Todd and the TTF to look at. That's okay.
Great. Sure. Thanks.
Can you, what's TTF or the public?
Traffic Task Force.
Traffic?
Task Force.
Just want to thank Mr. Hunter. I appreciate your staff working on our roads, getting them taken care of, and also, a lot of citizen requests. I know that your guys have a lot on their plate already, and you all have gone above and beyond. I just wanted to recognize you all for the great work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whitney, thank you for all your efforts. I hope it didn't impede too much on the big crowd you had there. They all intermingled, I believe. But thanks a lot for all you're doing with Ashland in Motion. And our Bill Ashland people, thank you publicly again for what you do every day, and not only out there working all the time, but I'm on Facebook, okay? I was wondering if the election and my daughters thought it was a good thing to do, and I don't go on Facebook. So, if there's something bad said about me, I don't see it. Now, my daughters will see it. And they may call me or something, but so far, so good. The only reason I say that is because they do show me from time to time, people get on Facebook bashing Bill Ashland. For goodness sake, I mean, come on. They need to get a life, and it's probably not in Ashland. They don't recognize all the great works, that all these volunteers, volunteers for goodness sake, get out to help others. They're not doing it for themselves, they're doing it for the community. And I'm very proud of them, and proud to be associated with them and a member of the group. And I plan to be there Saturday morning at 8:30 on the River Suite, down on our Port of Ashland. And I think it's 8:30 to noon. So, that's always a great effort, too, to help clean up down there and keep that place looking good for everyone. So, some of the things I read that were just so disconcerting to me, I thought, well, I'd better give a little added emphasis on what a great job they did for the City of Ashland and many of our residents. Repair fare, I think next year is going to basically go under Bill Ashland. They have so many more people getting involved in it. It gives everybody an opportunity to help our neighbors. And those neighbors that are either physically or whatever reason financially can't do just little things around their home to make it look more attractive in the neighborhood, which helps everybody in the neighborhood. But some of the things we did this past time were actually things that they would never be able to get done to their house, but we were able to do with the group, although I was put out by myself for about two hours before the independent staff showed up. But when they showed up, there were about 15 of them come out of vans, and there all was on my hands and knees digging. And this 99-year-old lady is one of the sweetest ladies I've ever met in my whole life. It was a joy for me to meet her and all that. My mother didn't live that long, but you might be looking at my mother because she kept coming out to see me and eat glass of water, but also to make sure I was still digging in her flower box, which I was. But it's so rewarding. All of that is so rewarding. It's neighbors helping neighbors in our community. So, Bill Ashland is a monumental part of that, and they'll be kind of running next year. So, just want to get those things out there. See, Mayor? I'm sorry, Pat?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
A couple of things, Mayor. While Mike is coming up, Mike Atkins is going to come up and give a really brief report on our insurance renewal updates and good news I wanted to share with not just the mayor commissioners, but the community. While he's coming up, very briefly, I want to thank everybody that was involved in putting the screens up. We've discovered we've had some problems sharing, whether it's videos or PowerPoints, et cetera. So, these were put up, and we're going to try to use these effectively, not only for the VOC meetings, but also other meetings that we have in here where video and audio are necessary. So, with that, I'll turn over to Mike before I cover the rest of my topics.
I want to appreciate the commission giving me a few minutes to go over this. City manager asked, as he said, to keep this brief, and I'll try my best to do that for some entertaining questions that you may have. Our insurance renewal this year looks good, or at least I believe it does. And if you'll focus your attention to the slides up here, overall, our total property and casualty renewal is down this year by about $81,799 to $603,000, $603,50 from $685 to $648. It's hard for me to see up there. I want to break this down into three components, basically. Workers' compensation, property liability, and our broker agent compensation. First of all, the workers' compensation comes in at $152,926. This is down right under 16% from last year, and over $28,000 in reductions from last year. In getting there, what we've done, and we've continued to do this now for three or four years, but this year specifically, we've increased our premium credits that we receive from our carrier, which is KIMI, the Kentucky Employer Mutual Insurance Company, from 20% to 35%. And this reduction is based upon our loss control management guidelines, how safe we operate, how we present ourselves to the carrier. Basically, it's good safety management practices, and that reduction itself is around $148,000. The other thing, the other item I want to point out there at the bottom is we've reduced our experience modification factor to .73 to .85 from 2017. And this gives us another $107,000 in premium reduction. And this is a primary tool that most people look from a safety professional's perspective, look and see how good we're doing. One is considered the normal, one point up. If you have a factor above that, generally, you have in your industry an injury rate that is higher than the other person in similar industry. We continue to move that downward, which is very good. This is based upon the cooperative staff and the training that we're doing with those people, and supervision that are just excellent out there. You know, this is a full team effort, and I couldn't commend them even more. Our property liability renewal, which is about 70% of our total renewal, based upon the size, and of course, we have a significant liability exposure with a city this size, but we've reduced that also by 8.4% for this year for another $39,000 in reductions from last year. And in doing that, we have achieved a top-tier rating status with our insurer, which is the Kentucky League of Cities. We have increased our credits. From last year, we received premium credits of 6%. This year, we received 12%. And this is the maximum credits we can get on premiums that the Kentucky League of Cities awards. And that constitutes another $99,000 as a reduction toward the premium itself. The third piece. And finally, our broker agent services. A few years back, the city made a decision to move from a sales compensation-based service to a fee for services with the broker agent, and reduced that significantly. But this year, we've moved it again down by $14,000, around 35%. And we're now paying the broker agent, which is People's Insurance, $25,000 per year. All in all, as I started out with, we're down by almost $82,000 this year, and we continue to want to take it downward. We realize that the nature of insurance sometimes is very cyclical, but this is all primarily due to the fact that this city cares, its employees care, and we continue to be very cost-conscious when it comes to our insurance renewals. I have for you guys, I have this slide, and I have a supplemental sheet as well, and any information that you need from me, I can supply to you upon request. Does anyone have?
Well, I just like saying, my many years in city government, you know, is a real big factor in school system, everywhere else that works, is comp. It really can just, from one year to the next, can just double. And I would hand it to our employees, who I'm confident, you know, work safely, and confident our supervisors ensure that, but also the fact that many of them get knocks and bruises and all that, and they just go home and take care of it, and not run here and run there all the time. I want our employees to know we appreciate the fact that they're a monumental factor in keeping these rates down, that something you can really affect, some of these we can affect, but human behavior will have that effect. So, I appreciate them, and a lot of people come to work sometimes, they probably take time off for some reason, go on some kind of extended leave. They do that in a lot of places, but I'm very proud of Ashland not having that problem.
We've got a very sound workforce. I'm proud. I've worked with other organizations. This is the finest group of people I've ever worked with, and are very conscientious about controlling these costs because they fully realize this is taxpayers' dollars that support this. Everyone realizes that. So, it's, you know, we have to be ethical in our approach, we have to be honest, and they do a good job. You're right. Anyone have any additional questions?
I dare not to be remiss, and not to embarrass you, Mike, but Mike has taken on a lot more than broker responsibilities. You'll see that reflected in the broker agent services. So, he's got 20 years of experience, 20-plus years of experience here, so it's no ding against our current broker, but he, knowing the people on the ground, knowing the environment on the ground, he's able to look for efficiencies and training, et cetera, that really helped get us to this. And like you said, it's cyclical. We understand that, but this is definitely a positive trend. So, I just want to thank Mike a lot.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple other issues. Mayor, you already mentioned the river cleanup. Mr. Locafido is going to be here in a minute, a little bit session, he's going to talk a little bit about that on Saturday. For the how can we help, I do want to reemphasize this here, the VOC, for commissioners meeting we have, to date, we have 124 total reports. 57% of those are pipe holes in streets, to Commissioner Perkins' point, 12% are code enforcement, and 9% are water service. So, of 124, that's where you see the vast majority of issues that our citizens are bringing out. Also, we recently had Chris and his, excuse me, Mr. Pullum and his team lead a session for CDBG on possibly garnering a grant. And some, a side conversation that broke out there was supporting the police, Ashland Police Department specifically on the east end of Ashland. What I want to announce is that within the next couple of weeks, Chief is going to lead a community session down there with the East Ashland residents, kind of make sure that we understand their concerns, some of the options that we have for improving our footprint there, and making sure we scratch the itch of the concerns that they have in that neighborhood. So, you'll be hearing about that. Follow-up, my two other things from Commissioner Goo. The recycling drop-off point is looking very sharp. We still need to hang the gates. We're likely going to look at opening that, closing, opening that next Thursday, starting the enforcement of those hours. And just to remind you, we're going to start off with Thursday and Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon, and then Saturday from 8:00 to 8:00. They'll be manned with a seasonal employee. There are some signs out there that clearly state what is and is not acceptable at that point. The individual is going to query the drop-off folks, where they're from, and then look at the license plate. So, simultaneously, we'll get this recycling survey back. We're going to have data from the temporary recycling point and also the survey, so the board can make some sound decisions with some good data that they have. The River Trail, again, as Commissioner Goo had pointed out, a lot of great work that's going on down there. We got to it as we can with the staff. And we are looking tentatively at the 23rd of June as a work session, communicating with Bill Ashland to garner some volunteers. We want to make sure that we don't waste everybody's time, that we have tasks laid out, getting a crumb run right off the trail, for example, but we've got some foliage removal to do down there and some other tasks that the team will have there for the volunteers. And then the last thing is, I just want to congratulate the United States Army on their 243rd birthday.
Is that why the flag's got out on time?
It was Flag Day today, so I don't want that to be missing.
Thank you very much. This point in our meeting is public participation. If you have an issue, a complaint, whatever, bring the board, the national, you give your name and address, or organization you represent, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Ms. Allen?
Thank you. I'm Carol Allen, the director of the Highlands Museum and Discovery Center across the street. So, I haven't been here for a while because we've been so absolutely extremely busy, so I thought I needed to kind of catch up with what's going on. First of all, I want to thank the city for your support over the six years that I have been director, and we certainly want to continue receiving your support, too. So, we really do appreciate that. You know, nonprofits struggle, you know that. And we at the museum have tried to be as inventive as we possibly can to take care of this 100-year-old building that we have, and we've managed to do that. And actually, in '24, that CH Parsons Building will be 100 years. So, we've got to come up with some major celebration, or at least my predecessor, or the future director does. But I wanted to bring everyone up to snuff on what we've done in six years. We have purchased that building, a seven-stop, five-floor building with seven stops, and we have done a major renovation of $650,000 renovation. We have cleared another floor, the fourth floor, as you know, the Highlands Center. And I'm proud to have been, to have given the Brandy Industries, we've enjoyed last Friday, a week ago, having them there, and all of the wonderful news that's coming to Ashland and this whole area. We're so thrilled about it and excited to be a part of it and getting the building ready for it, to accept it. We have also, I want to call your attention to the fact that that floor houses will seat at tables over 500 people, as was demonstrated that night. And now, this space allows for the City of Ashland and Ashland Alliance to advertise for larger conferences. I can remember when I was president of a state organization that needed to bring 550 people here, we couldn't do it because there was no place to have a conference. Now you have it, and soon you're going to have the hotel to put these people up. And I think this will provide for great economic growth for the Ashland area, as well as the whole tri-state area. So, to get down to what we're doing, July is a huge month for us. It's very busy, as every month is, but we have our, on July 8th, our garden tour. Now, that tour has seven homes on it. We have some in Ashland, we have one in Belfont, and we have two in Russell. And if you've always wanted to know what that spider web window house looks like, not only are they opening their garden, but they're opening their house. So, here's your chance to do that. And if you know Judy Phelan, her garden is wonderful. It's open also in Cattington. So, be sure to buy your tickets. I have them, they're only $15. July the 17th through the 21st, I'm so proud that we are, this is the third year that we have had our first responders camp. And I've met with several of these gentlemen here, from, you know, EMTs to the police to all of those who are first responders, and they graciously gave us a wonderful camp. And that has filled up the last two years. So, I'm expecting, as soon as we start our advertising campaign, this year will also. July the 21st is our Kids Fest. Now, if you want to see a sight, you need to come over. On the 21st, there'll be about 700 kids that will be roaming through our museum. And we had the chairman of the IRS here that day last year, and I was giving him a tour. And when I opened the garage, opened the door to fourth floor, he said, now this is where it's at. And he just joined in and had a ball. So, you need to come over and see those kids in action. It's a great day for kids. Bring your kids or grandkids and come on over. And also, we have three rentals already for July, weddings and reunions are scheduled as well. Now, I wanted to bring you up to date on this one. You may not know too much about what we have going on right now, but we have been working with, I've told you, reported this, with Kramer Designs in Cincinnati, and we do have the designs for 13 exhibits in our Discovery Center. To make the Discovery Center, you know, we came to the realization that we're getting an influx of people, and that basement is too small. We would be behind in five years. So, we have increased that to second floor, giving us 11,000 square feet. And so, with that, we are already in the planning session with architects and ready to move forward with that pretty soon. So, I hope within the next few months, you're going to see building going on on our second floor, which will make that building look completed. It will have, be a center for conferences downtown, educational development center with interactive exhibits that will please every child, a history museum, a country music heritage hall, and a science center, complete with satellites and CubeSats. We had Naomi Judd in there with her husband. He said, this is better than Nashville. So, come over and take a look, been there for a while, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Carol. Carol, you know, my university, I hosted my university the other day, and I had about 40-some people from, went to ride a van, like I did. I didn't know a lot of them myself, but I had dinner with the president, chairman of the board was there and all that, and they were really impressed. They were impressed with Ashland, and then they, some had shopped at Parsons years ago because they lived, chilled coffee or something like that. But they were really impressed. They said they're always impressed with Ashland. I don't know if I've told you guys, but they said every time they come through, going anywhere, they're amazed at how clean our city is. And, you know, we look, it's like, you know, I'm used to managing pool and walk around looking to find something wrong all the time. You know, looking for paint on the ground, or they didn't sweep out the corners, walking around. You're always looking at the negative part. I think some of our residents suffer from that. But if you really stop and think, when people come in and they see us totally differently, it could be possibly from the town they live in, it could be possibly from the towns they've been driving through. And all of us, well, many of us travel a lot, vacation, we drive, we go through communities, and I'm very proud of the fact that, I can't wait to get back home, usually decide to go or decide to get home. I think Ashland, our staff, people in general, throughout our community, take really good care of the property for the most part, but we have a pretty clean town. And more than one of the people made note of that. They love to come to Ashland because they love Central Park, they love Winter Wonderland, everything about it. So, sometimes we, all of us, get bent, us more than you, get bent on maybe negative aspects that we feel like we need to be doing more, and we don't stop and spell the roses that we already have. But the museum is a highlight for our city and getting revamped, and that will provide... There was always a complaint years ago, we could not get more than 150, 200 people convention in Ashland. Not only have you opened it up, the hotels can have space, not like yours, but they have to have places to stay. And you have the post office here on the corner that can take, they could set up conferences at the same time, you know, in different buildings, and just walk right around or downtown, which are merchants' benefits. And we're doing everything we can to beautify the downtown, and we got more to be done here shortly. We start on, it's gonna, I already think it's the place to be in a tri-state. But I think it will, a lot of people will be looking to come here for a lot of different reasons. Museum's going to be one of them.
Carol, I commend you and your board and your army of volunteers that make, that have made the museum what it is. I mean, you'll say it's your crew, but I think you single-handedly turned that museum around, and I'm so proud to have you as a champion, not just for the museum, but for our town. Thank you.
Retired school teachers are special, Carol.
We have to raise money for my...
That's true.
I love that. We do, too. Thanks for being here. Anyone else like to address the commission? Now, Whitney, we already said all we're going to say about you today.
Oh, keep coming. Whitney, Ashland in Motion, we're looking at 1509 Winchester. We just want to remind the community about the Fourth Annual Reconfests on Saturday. We're really excited to celebrate the craft beer festival for a fourth year. It keeps getting bigger. This year, we have some new additions, like Ms. Clark had mentioned, the VIP tent, which is air-conditioned. We'll have some complimentary food, we have some specialty beers. There's a total of 128 beers this year to the festival, which is the largest number that we've offered. We have more retailers and food vendors than we ever have. And so, we also want to remind folks that that is an open-to-public event. So, if you're interested in craft beer tasting, you need to buy a ticket, and of course, be 21 or older, but otherwise, bring your family members, your designated drivers, those are all invited at no cost. So, we're looking forward to that. And while I'm mentioning that, I have to thank not only Mayor and Commissioners, but the city staff between this event and the Brandy Industries event, Mr. Hunter and his crew, and APD, and Fire and Parks, Ms. Hale with ABC. Anytime I have a question or concern, they answer my calls and texts at all hours of the day. They usually say yes to my crazy requests. And there's so many elements that go on behind the scene to get these events coordinated, and things change last minute, and they are always accommodating and so helpful, and these things would not be possible without your crew. So, very appreciative.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate you signing our staff. We love, we give thanks for something. We don't get a lot of those, but that's the nature of it. But we really like it when they mention our fire department, our police department, our street department, our sanitation. Those are the people that make it all happen, you know, before and after, during, whatever. And it was a, it was a real community party that went smooth, like everything else we do in Ashland. And I, it's due to our staff, our public safety people, and everybody else, street and all. So, thanks. That means a lot to them, I know. Mr. Locafido?
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I had a small conversation with Mr. Grazie this morning about the River Suite, and he asked me if I just come to kind of update everybody about this. I'm Rick Locafido, I work for FiveCo, the Development District. FiveCo has been a part of the River Suite process, the program, for the last 17 years I know of. Basically, it's sponsored by Rocinco, is the major sponsor, corporate sponsor. And we have recently taken in the counties of Lawrence County into this as well, to pick up the big sand. But it's designed to pick up trash and debris along the riverbanks from here all the way down the Diamond River. I know Ashland's been a big part, Cattington, this is a big component every year. Marathon Refinery sends people up, Boy Scouts have participated. We can pick up communities like Russell and Worley, Tuning, Greenup, and South Shore have all participated. But this year is the, it's Saturday, the time is listed in the paper or on the website at 8:30 is for the time for kickoff. We suggest gathering by 8 o'clock. Then there will be a, I passed out some forms there, which is a release, basically, you can print off the internet, or you can pick them up there when you show up, just basically a simple release form for any damages, or if you get hurt or something on the way you're doing this. But trash bags will be provided, gloves will be provided, and they'll be meeting at the river. And they'll be meeting at the river, along the riverbank at the boat ramp down here in, in Ashland. And we'll gather all the debris and a lot, some of the cities like, uh, for example, Louisa, we talked to them the other day. Louisa was kind of, uh, surprised last year there wasn't that much debris. They said most of it was down against Ashland. But they, they picked up things along the streets. And so it doesn't really have to be limited to the riverbank. That's where it's designed to be. But if you've got some areas of, of the town or close to the river, the, the streets that need some debris picked up, uh, you can maybe move up and use that for the same process. But we're just trying to, as you spoke, clean up Ashland, clean up the area. And, uh, every year we have a quite a bit of garbage that's picked up. And we have people that bring truck loads in and dump it at different locations. But it's something that we try to do every year and try to sponsor it, try to put it out, promote it. And we appreciate the city of Ashland being a part of this.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, you know, uh, it is far, it works far better for us to help. And I know the Bill Ashland people feel the same way. Uh, they're rewarded far more than whoever we're helping or, or, or community. This is basically a really a, a downtown improvement effort.
And, uh... It happens in Ohio as well, though there's some other groups in Ohio that pick up on the other side of the river. So it's kind of a, a large regional, uh, process that goes everywhere up from the Ohio all the way down. So it's a, it's not just these, our FiveCo area, it's, it's a lot of areas are involved in this the same time. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your involvement in that too. Yes, sir. Mr. Stacy? You're missing lunch, aren't you?
Oh, we already have it.
Oh, yeah.
I'm Stacy. I'm here in Ashland and was saying, with the Ashland Kentucky Pickleball Club. Four years ago, Mr. Lynn White and I started pickleball in this area. And we kept seeing on Facebook all these other cities putting in new pickleball courts. We keep thinking, boy, wouldn't that be nice? Well, it happened here. We've got the best pickleball courts we can get. I'd like to thank all of you right here. I'd like to thank Sean Murray, Park Board, for everything that you've done for us. Now, the big challenge, all of you come out and play. We'll teach it. We'll work with you and have fun. Again, thank everybody up here, the mayor, all of you. We really appreciate it. Our president, the club's here with us, Mr. Doug Jones. So again, thank you very much. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach. We appreciate you being a real catalyst for, for this in Ashland.
Lots of activity every time I'm going by the park.
Yes, looks nice, yeah. I was in Florida the last five days with my daughters and granddaughters. It was an event, trust me. I told them, Perkins, it's much easier when they're toddlers. You think that they're paying their toddlers, uh-uh. It's when they're teenagers and, and my, my young adult, daughters, but it's, it's, but we saw all kinds of. In fact, we took a picture. I told Bob, we took a picture of the car. We saw them all over the park. It's so big down there. Uh, they actually have a pickleball logo. They've got on the back of the cars. I'm very proud of it. Uh, I watched it on TV and, uh, I'm ready to take you on, Bob, I think. I think I still got some athletic ability from college, you know?
I know. You won't pick on me because you can win.
I figure if I lose, they'd say, well, you didn't play ball. So I can lose on that one. Thank you, guys, for helping push it. And of course, I do think you have a Cadillac course up there now to play on. And more and more people pick it up. You know, a lot of people, it's gonna be kind of new. They don't realize it, it, it isn't demanding. It's, there's a lot of thought involved. But, you know, a lot of people, it's kind of like golf. They can play forever. That's what I'm hoping for anyway. Thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, we appreciate you being here today. Old business, how to make?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor, execute a contract between the city and Morton Salt Acre for purchase of approximately one thousand five hundred tons of treated rock salt at eighty-four dollars per ton delivered to Department of Public Services and Utilities Operations Division of Streets.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
How to beat?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky inventing the zoning map, official zoning of this city. Number one-on-one, series eighty-six is previously amended, changing the zoning classification five forty-two Platter Avenue from R-five multi-single-family residential medium density to B-one neighborhood business.
Have motion?
Salute.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Item C?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky fixing the regulatory license fee of four percent of gross receipts from the sale of alcoholic beverages within the city during fiscal year July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand nineteen, is authorized and imposed, section twenty-five of ordinance fifty-nine, series two thousand eighteen, known and cited as the alcoholic beverage control, control ordinance for the city. Such proceeds to be used to reimburse the city for expenses related to the sale of alcoholic beverages there.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Item D?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor, execute a contract between the city and Worldwide Industries Corporation for repair and painting of the Kalasberg Water Storage Tank in the amount of three hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars for the division of water distribution.
Salute. You have a second?
Second.
Now, people understand that while we think, when we see that, that there couldn't cost that much to paint outside that tank, rather paint the inside of that. And you take it down, and they do a lot of chemical processes. Had to learn this. I didn't study in college, I'd say, but, uh, I ask questions about stuff like this. These guys do too, up here. So how could that, I mean, we'll go do it. We'll get Bill Ashland to go paint this thing. But it, it takes a, a lot of chemical process, very dangerous. I particularly wouldn't want to climb down any one of those tanks spraying chemicals. And it's a major process, then it's coated, then it's coated again. It's a major process. And when we took over the Ashland, or the Cattington Water District, uh, Mr. Martin's been here that long, I'm sure.
I blew for a bench over there.
But, uh, when you take them over, and it definitely, in a need, a safety, healthy reason to do it and all that, it is, I just want you to know, there's a huge process to, to do these things. Mayor, there, there are also, there's structural things that go on with that, and it bottom lines extends a lot, about thirty years on a month. Thanks, Mayor. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Item E?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order three between the city, Tribune Contracting and Construction LLC for contractor guarding twenty-ninth Street Stormwater Separation Project, granting a ninety-day extension from April fourteen to July thirteen, two thousand eighteen, for completion for the project Department of Engineering Utilities.
Come on.
Second.
I know we don't like to do that, but, um, investigating this also, yeah, part, part of it, part of it is possibly or partly our, uh, ability on one hand to put new water lines in, where I think we've missed this before to the audience, that while they're putting the storm, the mandated CSO storm sewer system underground, we've had a lot of water problems up twenty-ninth Street, on up at the, you know, the Board Hill, Oak, Maple, all those streets that, uh, we put a new water line in to save ditch. So it saved us a fortune later on, but it delayed the contractor on moving quicker on his job. So why, I don't believe that totally. I'm, I'm gonna accept it because, because what I just want to do, but July thirteenth is, you know, I think it'll be done. Everything's gonna be done before then, but that was the extension. But we do look into these things. We just don't say, okay, fine, but we'll pay it. Or we'll give you the time. All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Yeah, item F?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky inventing part five compensation plan, section K. Policies, procedures, compensation plan, classification plan is adopted by ordinance fifty-one, series two thousand seventeen, as previously.
Well?
Salute.
My gosh. Warm out for you or was...
Hurt me out.
Have a second?
Second.
Well, that's special.
That's warm out.
I got it. Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Item G?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directive to the mayor to submit program year two thousand eighteen action plan for community development block grant to US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and upon acceptance of said application provided. To execute on behalf of the city in agreement, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grants in the...
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Okay. Item A?
First reading, May twenty-fourth, ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting regulations for business entities providing food services within the city, requiring hepatitis A inoculations for workers engaged in the handling of food to be consumed by the public. Ask that she not, uh, make a motion or second and let this die. We've got a new ordinance on and new business.
That dies for lack of a motion. Any other old business?
No, sir.
Consent agenda?
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, approving the course of action presented by the city manager on items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting board of city commissioners, June fourteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss item, uh, ten, which is the installation, uh, of the playground. Uh, Mr. Martin? This is something we put in our budget, and I appreciate you all getting this taken care of. Could you go over what, what it is we're getting and, and do we have any image?
Yeah. Sure. Um, so what we have is accepting a bid, we went through a bid process to find Americans with Disabilities Act compliant and accessible and inclusion equipment, um, for our, our public. And our goal is to actually install that at, at Central Park to replace the old wooden structure we have. Uh, we were able to do that, a lot of hard work from staff. And this particular structure, this design, um, again, it's, it's a process when you're, when you're doing this to, to provide inclusiveness is one of our, our goals. One of our main goals of this, and actually how this came about was we've had meetings with the public, um, we've had, um, the park board involved. We've kept them involved on every step of the way. And we've received a lot of support and a lot of input from the general public and from our staff with some research to go along with it. And what, what we've come up with, we think is a very, very inclusive and a very, it's going to be accessible, uh, apparatus for the entire public.
So, and there's more than just this, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That was actually part of our plan. So, um, we were fortunate enough, the city commission budgeted fifty thousand dollars during this, this budget year, this fiscal year. And we were able to stay under budget on the first piece, uh, which we just took off the screen. And actually, this is going to be the second piece of equipment or, uh, pieces of equipment. And we're, we're very excited about that. Where we come in, we being the city, is when we come to the inclusiveness and the accessibility for all of our, our public, uh, we'll come back after the structures are, have been put in, and we'll make sure that we're staying with those, those same guidelines that we followed before.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Of course, you know, we have a state-of-the-art, uh, playground at Poe Elementary School. I mean, they, they raised a ton of money and, and the board and obviously kind of helped with it. Uh, and all of our playgrounds, every school are open, you know, to everybody, uh, anytime or whenever, sometimes during school day when kids are out, but we don't know who else is there. But it's, it's, uh, because that's a rubber mat all around this state. Any place it fall or anything, it's very stable. It's very stable for them to walk on if they have some impediments there. Well, one of the, the things we were excited about is, is getting so much input from the public. And I noticed that Mrs. Parker was here today, and, uh, her specifically, back in March, spoke to the park board about the inclusiveness and about the accessibility for those with disabilities. How can we accommodate everybody and not just certain groups? And so that's, that's what we're looking at here.
And one more, one more question. It's a little bit off track, but the splash pad in Library Commons?
You bet. So we just, this week, received the remainder of the pads.
Okay.
They're being installed. One piece was installed, I think, on Monday of this week.
Okay.
The remainder's still coming in, and I anticipate within the next three or four working days, it'll be up and running. Right. We've checked it out.
Yep. Sean, you said that that was made of a certain, it was a little bit different.
Yeah, it's a non-slip, uh...
Non-slip.
I guess I won't, for lack of getting into the technical terms of it. Uh, it's a pad that you would see to make sure that when our kids go in there and they want to participate in, and we think it's a great environment, but we'll make sure it's safe as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear it, Mr. Martin. Any other, any questions on, on this agenda? Have a motion? Have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on.
I'd like to record number seventeen, I'm saying, I don't know what the order is. They're accusing the government of...
On order, please. Take that out of your appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, I make?
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky fixing the tax levy for the year two thousand eighteen, payable in the year two thousand nineteen, on the bank deposits franchise tax for revenue purposes for the city.
For the public's, for the public's allowance, what is the, what is that amount?
Point zero two five for one hundred dollars, which is the max rate allowed by state.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Close the lights on. Item B?
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting regulations for business entities providing food services within the city, requiring hepatitis A inoculations for workers engaged in the handling of food to be consumed by the public.
Salute.
This includes the changes that were addressed by Mr. Cooksey and...
Working with our restaurant industry.
Right. Are expressed on behalf of the restaurant industry. And, uh...
So we work with our local businesses, our, our, our communities, so that our, our ordinance would, would be amicable to everybody as best we can be?
And with, closely with the health department.
Great.
Who also is with the restaurant industry.
Okay.
Specific changes that were added were, um, for the Clarifone Food Service, adding hospital, caterers, banquet facilities, adding booster language, uh, exceptions for people, uh, various exceptions to, to the policy. So I think as Mr. Martin said, everything that was discussed before and according to the agency, as you always mentioned.
Probably exceptions that are covered similar to boosters for children, same way?
Yes. Now, it won't be long that all school kids are gonna be receiving this in their schools that, you know, it'll be long. It will move point.
Right.
But I did, um, this past, uh, actually last week, I ran into a, one of our larger restaurant, uh, managers, and he, he felt it really wasn't fair to, to restaurants. Not so much the ordinance, in my opinion, as the, uh, the way it looks, that everybody's getting this at their restaurant and, and no one can prove that. And, uh, so we had a, a nice discussion, and I said, well, you know, far be it from anybody I'm serving with, because I know I'm gonna be talking about things like this, do we even want to get into telling people how to run their business? But if we had any business in town that provided some kind of dangerous situation or something could be even worse, long-term and so forth, without, uh, us taking some kind of action, I mean, I, how many times have you heard the say, and you all do too, the, the number one thing we provide are citizens' safety and health issues. I mean, if we don't do that, forget water, sewer, garbage, let your house burn down.
I mean, if we don't do that, forget water, sewer, garbage, let your house burn down. You've got to everywhere we can. And I initiated me with the health department, but I think she was ready to come and see us anyway. But we, I think we might be the first city in Kentucky doing this and I'm proud of that. It's, there isn't a fine in there, there really isn't anything like that, $50, well, there isn't any fine in there really. But my explanation to that person was that, you know, if not us, who? Where you may feel like you do the best and the most, and I think they do, and somebody's going to trickle through and it still might do that. But you know, my position is I've got several friends that own several restaurants in Ashland, some are small ones and all that, and they're franchises. He jumped on it immediately. He's going to do it, he didn't need anybody to tell him anything. He did this when the first thing came out because, I mean, it's a business decision. You don't do it and everyone else is doing it, I don't know who wants to go to your restaurant. I'm not saying you go in there, you're going to catch anything from somebody there. And I'm not going to tell you that this is all inclusive ordinance that's going to keep that from happening, but it is a step by city government that we are expecting our food service people to do, do this, to do everything in their power to make sure their employees keep washing their hands, stay clean, so, and give thanks to anyone that has. I don't, I don't know. I don't know how trying to protect the public could be anything different from that.
Mayor, I agree with you in terms of bringing this into the forefront and I appreciate the steps that this commission is taking to do that. I appreciate you going back with the restaurant owners and making sort of a comprehensive ordinance that says this is how this is going to be done. I'm going to vote no on this simply because I do believe it's a business decision and I'm not sure it's a function of ours to dictate that decision. I fully support anybody who thinks they need this vaccination and I think everybody should get the vaccination. I'm just not sure that this is a function of city government to say that you have to. So I'm just explaining my notes.
Sure. Anyone else?
I think public health is paramount to us, so I'll vote yes.
There's a lot of things that mandate and I respect your...
Absolutely, respect it, yeah.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Let the show go on.
Thank you.
Out of C.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement with community assistant referral service. Carers, a sub-recipient of $31,600 in the 2018 program year, community development block.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All favor?
I recuse myself.
Vote like so. Out of D.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing agreement with Boyd County Council of Aging, Ashland Senior Center, a sub-recipient of $14,000 from the 2018 program year, community development block.
Any discussion? All favor?
Vote like so.
I recuse myself.
Recusal.
Can I do a mass recusal for every?
Out of A.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing agreement with Hill Press Bruce Mission, sub-recipient of $18,000 from the 2018 program year, community development block.
Salute.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Vote like so. Okay, out of G.
I'm in.
I'm in. I just want to see if you're following me.
I'm with you. Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing agreement with the Ashland Child Development Center, Inc., a sub-recipient of $7,000 from the 2018 program year, community development block.
That motion?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Vote like so. Or recusal?
Recusal.
Now, Mr. Paul, you know, we've written a bunch of these. Would you make a very brief explanation of why these people are getting these CBPG funds?
This was all approved in our action plan and they're all sub-receivables who provide eligible services. It's all provided by HUD, so every project we approve is a sub-recipient of grant must meet one of the eligibility requirements for HUD. These projects have been met with the war so we have awarded funds of interest.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All favor? Vote or recusal?
I'd take that one a double. Out of G. Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing agreement with Shelter of Hope, a sub-recipient of $5,000 from the 2018 program year, community development block.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Vote like so. Or recusal? Out of H.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing agreement with the Ashland Community Kitchen, Inc., a sub-recipient of $5,000 from the 2018 program year, community development block.
That motion?
Salute.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Recusal. Or recusal.
Out of...
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the revised job description for the physician corporation councils, a full-time position, a revised job description, a physician assistant corporation council, as a part-time position, Department of General Government, Division Legal, amending authorized positions and policies and procedures compensation plan, classification plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series 17, as previously amended.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Vote like so. Out of J.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky accepting the proposal of hiring to engineering and survey PLLC for professional engineering and drafting services associated with a sewer lining project for the Department of Public Services Utility Operations Division Waste Water Collection.
That motion?
Second.
Mr. Manager, that is the process where we say digging them up and we re-align them. And when we did that a few years ago, I read about what was going on, Mr. Eastwood, you made the answer too, but I listened to the manual. How, was it successful? I mean, as far as we're concerned, everything's good. They put some kind of sleeve and then run it through the existing line. How big is this line?
There are a variety of different lines.
Eight, six?
Yeah, anywhere from eight inches all the way up to about 18 inch or 24 inch, I think is the largest. And we choose these based upon where they are. If they're in the middle of a city street or underneath houses or structures and they're just not feasible to dig up or it would cost, you know, a lot to dig them up. This is a very feasible method. And what it is, it's a felt sleeve that's impregnated with a resin and whenever it's filled with water inside the pipe and it melts the resin into the felt and makes a very hard, hard pipe that it's just as hard as like, say PVC or a similar other type of pipe. So then if the pipe all around it fell away, it would still be strong enough for 50-plus years of life. And once it's done, it's so smooth, there's no joints, it's a, it's a great process.
How many of you here today believe that? Well, I didn't believe. I followed it. I followed it in the paper and then, well, commissioners were here then, but I followed how much it cost to put and all that. But I, when I took office, I think I had Mr. Eastwood in. The first two or three weeks I was here, I asked him about this process because it fascinated me. If you could stick something through that pipe and water would cause it solidify, swell out and cover the interior of that pipe. And so he got me a whole, he got me a stack of stuff, like he wanted to make sure he proved that point. And he did prove the point with me, which we have video cameras we send through those pipes to check all this out. Now, the last 50 years, I hope a lot of you just proved that. I won't be proving it, but that's great. But I do understand there are places where we'd rather not dig up or can't, it's going to be too costly. But this isn't a cheap operation, but it is, it's an unbelievable thing to think exists even 2018 with so many things out there. But I just wanted people to understand that there's a process that works like that. I'm still a little amazed about it. Ron, did we do that a couple of years back on 15th Street?
We did it in two locations. On 15th Street from, I believe it was Carter, down to that paddy surrounding that area. And then on 17th Street from Central Avenue all the way down to Winchester. So if you could imagine what digging that road up would have been like, you know, 15 foot deep right in the center of the road to replace it versus what we did, which was a couple of days of road closure and a little bit of inconvenience, it's definitely well worth it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the commission was kind of a pace setter around here for that process. And I read all about it. I had no intention of running for mayor when I read all about it, but I just thought it was interesting. So, all favor? So y'all learned something today, maybe?
Out of K.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing contract between the city and Great Southern Recreation for all labor materials, safety, and supervision for installation of playground equipment at the city's Central Park in the amount of $27,231 for the Department of Engineering.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Vote like so. Out of L.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, and merit executing contract between the city and Shield Roofing for removal and replacement of the roof on the city's central garage buildings located at 4140 Winchester Avenue, the amount of $43,608.84 for the Department of General Government.
Mr. Adkins, so when we do things like that, I know the insurance people used to come in and go around all our facilities. Do they still do that?
Yes.
Annual basis?
Not all the facilities, not annually. They will usually rotate certain facilities and go around. Just recently, the Walsh control personnel was in, they looked at a few, but early in the year we had property evaluation, which the majority of facilities were at that. But probably within the next two months, ALC will be, they'll be looking at a large number of our facilities again.
So we have a facility like this and they happen to come in, they look, we haven't done this yet or anything. Would that be something that they would maybe have summer rate?
It could. It depends on the facility, the structure, the exposure. But yes, anytime you've got a facility that's in ill repair, it can definitely affect the rate. For example, I'm, you know, I'm going to make a big deal with the insurance company when everything's completed and new street, we'll get the old facility out of that. They're anxious for that because that, the old facility is always a risk to any insurer and they want to see the newer facilities secure.
Thanks a lot. All favor? Vote like so. Out of M.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing, directing, and merit executing a school resource officer agreement between the city and the Ashland Independent School District for the term July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor? Vote like so. I'm in.
Orange City of Ashland, Kentucky approving and adopting the 2018-2019 budget, appropriating revenues on hand and to be received during the year 2018-2019 for the payment of expenses of the city, the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2018, ending June 30, 2019, appealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict here with...
That motion?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a couple of things. You know, we have some things not in the budget that we wanted to see in the budget due to financial constraints and one of them being our, any additional help we could give our county and their animal control shelter. I just, I think it's important that we work together and I think everybody appreciates the hard work that the county's doing on the animal shelter and if things are better financially moving forward, I would definitely want, I think, the board to look again and see if we can't help in any way.
That's reasonable. I think we, if we kind of go on record in January halfway through our budget, we'll see how things are falling in place. We haven't been hit hard on some things and we try, we have already given the county $25,000 towards the construction of that. And we can look at it in January and see what we can come up with. Maybe there's some areas that we are not costing as much as we thought they would and then keep that good cooperative partnership with our county and obviously our people.
And I was thinking about that. You know, we could cut costs further as we go along. One of them, I didn't even think about it. What about taking away the commissioner's vehicle allowance? How much is, how much is the commissioner's vehicle allowance? A month?
$4,100, I think, total?
Total? What's that, what's that per month?
About $340.
So 340, so we could possibly bring another $4,100 out for...
I would point out, we will come down to a contingency amount of $323. How much? $323. $323, hey?
Well, I would go ahead if you all would entertain and I propose amending the budget and moving the commissioner vehicle allowance to the contingency fund before we adopt our budget today.
We can adopt on first read, we have to file adoption.
You're going to have a special meeting, we got to set the tax rate.
So when, would you like me to propose the amendment to the budget? Sure. Yeah, okay.
When we need a special meeting? The same day?
Sometime before the end of the month.
The same, we do the same day?
We have to give the tax rate a second reading, so I have to have a meeting to give a first reading and then we give everything a second reading. So hopefully we'll have a special meeting between now and the next reading we scheduled to be, is that planned, Mr. Seaton, that different thing?
So we're adopting the budget today without the amendment?
It's the first read.
We would need two readings with the amendment.
Yes, you could both fill the special meeting on the tax rate for the first...
Yeah, and you could just revise it and let this...
Should say that? We could only give the tax rate, we could give the tax rate, turn this, we could give the tax rate, correct?
Yeah, I would, if we know a date that we're going to be able to give the tax rate, I would recess this meeting to that date.
Do you know that yet, Tony? Do you have any idea?
I don't. I just got the tax assessment from the PVA Monday. I've been out of town a couple of days. I should have it set probably by Monday.
So we can, we can set a call. We don't have to recess.
Okay. We should call. We'll give it all the next year.
So we won't have to do two readings to amend it?
Well, what we could end up doing is giving first reading at the time we give the tax rate. Or let this one die at first reading.
So let this die and then I'll just propose the amendment next year?
Yeah, I mean, you can knock, you can knock both of those through and just...
Wait for the...
The meeting where you got set the tax rate. Either way, whatever you want.
All favor?
Are we going to let it die or are we going to...
You want this to die?
I don't know. I would give a first reading and then just...
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, give a first reading, that's fine. I'll vote for that.
I don't know. We should...
Okay.
All favor?
All favor? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, out of O.
I didn't know if you were having a fang or anything.
No, you and I are pretty close to the same age.
I'm having a fang.
I wouldn't be falling by way. You're like my wife, I don't answer her beat. She looks at me like, "Are you okay?" You know, sometimes we don't want to answer real quick, okay? I haven't thought about my answer.
Well, we've thought about it, now we're going to resolution. Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing a 3% increase for all members of policemen and firefighters pension fund to be paid from the general fund.
That motion?
Salute. Second.
Second. So how many are we talking about?
Seventeen.
years, FY '15 was 3%, '16 was 0%, FY '17 was 2%.
Okay, in discussion. All favor?
Aye.
All votes like sign.
I'm P.
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing a 3% increase for all members of the utility pension fund to be paid from the utility.
Second.
How many is that?
23.
Okay. All favor?
Aye.
All votes like sign. Any other new business?
Yes, we'll, a motion going executive session to discuss personnel matter, and only personnel matters will be discussed, individual personnel matters, and no action will be taken in executive session, so when we come out, we'll adjourn the meeting, you're welcome to stay.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
No recusal?
No recusal on this one.
227, only individual personnel was discussed, actually received that one, for you.
We figured that out.
And that was it, so.
I like it.
Motion to adjourn.
That's our turn.
Well, we don't know when we're going to have that meeting, so we're going to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, just has to be before July 1, or is there?
Well, we have to do two readings on both the tax rate and the budget before July 1.